In all areas of the school. Blessing's favorite subject is math and she enjoys working on order of operations problems. She is one of the highest achieving students at Micky Bright. Her test scores in math and reading place her in the 80th percentile, well above the average. She is... Blessing is planning to attend Helen Arnold's CLC for 6th grade next year and she is excited to go to the beach with her family this summer. So, you would come up and join me in leading the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you tell us who you brought with us? With you this evening?
I brought my mom, my sister, my two cousins, and my nanny.
As always, we want to thank Blessing for all of her hard work and for being such an excellent student and an APS ambassador, so thank you again. Next, because of the length of our agenda, the two presentations that we have, the recognitions that we have, and some items we have on the agenda for executive session, we're going to postpone our community and school reflection this evening. And we're going to go, we have no request to address the board on the agenda for this evening, but we are going to jump into recognitions for the superintendent's student seminar. And at your place, each of you has some information for students. So if we just want to start, maybe going around and having an introduction.
Each year, we select two students, seniors from Beach High School. And the monthly sessions start in September and end in April. This year, they had the opportunity, as usual, to have some conversations with me and also with Carla Sibley's help to attend seminars and visit Akron area resources. This year, sessions included FAFSA and scholarship search session with Yvonne Culver, a visit to the Summit County offices of Executive Eileen Shapiro, a visit to the Business Accelerator, participation in a dialogue on racial justice at the John Brown home, and also ended with one of my favorite sessions is financial literacy conducted by Mustard Seed Development Corporation. And so, at your place are some tokens of appreciation and achievement for this year's class of the superintendent seminar.
Thank you. We just want to go around and invite our students up and introduce them and we'll celebrate them for a second and maybe they can tell us who they brought with them this evening while they're being recognized. Would you like to start?
I have Matthew Lawyer from Ellet High School.
What can you tell us about yourself? Did you bring anybody with you?
Well, who was that?
A little bit about myself. Of course, I'm a senior at Ellet High School male representative. Those are my two parents right there. Wonderful, love them. Very supportive of me. It's pretty much about it what I would say, so.
Do you know what your plans are for the fall?
Fall, I suppose. I got accepted to Maloney University, one of the, studying the pastoral ministry.
Amen.
And first one, I'm glad to give these because these are two kids from my alma mater, the high school.
Our.
Our, 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 the North High School. And first I have Saul Wynn. Is Saul Wynn here? You can try and tell us who you brought with you and what you know to do and your plans for the future.
So, I'm going to, you're the self Akron kid, Bob. I major in biology. I'll participate in health medicine, sometimes become a PA or a nurse. So, I have my mother and this kid, she's a I- staff coordinator and also this kid.
We also have from the North High School. It's Tree Paul. It's Tree Paul here.
My name is Tree. I'm currently in a nursing program at Bulto CLC and I got, I passed my test on the STNA now. And with all, I want to go to the University of Akron and I'm here with my cousin.
I have from Ellet High School, Carly Bevler. Did I say your last name correctly?
It's me.
I'm your man.
So, I plan on going to the University of Akron next year and major in education. And yeah, I'm pretty involved in the music programs at Ellet.
I didn't bring anybody with you tonight?
Oh, my mom.
My shining star is from Firestone CLC and I'm happy to say five of my six children graduated from Firestone High School. And my awardee is Michael Boyle. Is he here? He's not here.
And then my shining star from Bulto is Willon Phillips.
Phillips, thank you very much. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Who brought you?
I brought my dad. I'm a R O T C at Bulto. I'm a true flag. And I plan on going to Kent Stark. And I...
Wonderful. Thanks.
I have two shining stars. The first is Paris Mosley. From East CLC.
Congratulations. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and who you brought with you?
Yeah. My name is Paris Mosley. I go to East High School. I plan on going to college in the fall to major in exercise science, become a physical therapist. And my counselor, Ms. Jones Hunter, is here today. And yeah, that's it.
The other shining star, Ken Moore Garfield High School, Wesley Brown. Wesley Brown here. Another sign. I want to congratulate him for his outstanding work as well.
And the shining star I have the honor of introducing is Carlos Robinson from Nifestown High School. Carlos. All right. Well, let's congratulate Carlos. And I'm sure that the students that aren't here, clearly they're shining stars and they do a lot to be recognized, so I'm sure that they have, some of them have sports and extracurriculars. But if we could have all of the shining stars that were here tonight come up so that we can get a photo. And did we miss anyone?
I think it's all this year.
Okay. Future pastors. Oh, okay. It got updated.
Say Superintendent. Did it work?
All right. Love the parents. Thank God. Love the parents. Move out of the way so the parents can...
for taking time out of his schedule too to work with students and provide some mentorship and some leadership training to them. So, well done. Yes, and if they do have things that you guys need to do.
They're flying out of here.
Yeah, they're flying anyway. So first, we're going to go a little out of order from what's on the agenda. We're going to have the graduation update from Mark Black. Are you ready? Is that good? Is that okay?
That's great. Yes, because I have to get on the road.
Wait, we're down. You're going to have to get on the road too.
I do, sir. I'll be right back.
Why are we going out of order?
I'm going to go.
Thank you.
All right. Now, Yvonne, if you could stand up, let me do the quick introductions. We are representing the graduation committee. And we have Marcy E. Bright and Yvonne Culver. They're going to co-present with me today. And we are excited because this is a new day. The class of 2018, as you guys know, we've been taking a journey with this class. They've had two different testing companies issue them tests. They've had graduation requirements changed and now they have an alternative pathway. So today, we're going to give you guys an overview. We'll give you an overview of where we are with our class of 2018 as we come upon the graduation season. I want you guys to take the journey. If you have a folder, it's on the left-hand side, and if you got a handout, it's the portrait of the graduate. Our journey goes through the eyes of our graduate. The things that we are trying to do to ensure that when they enter the real world, they have the skills necessary to be employed, enrolled into a college, or enlisted into the armed services. And when we look at our district focus, we know that we can't just talk about being a number one early. We got a structure. We have to design. We have to implement processes that will allow for our students to not only confirm learning, but commit to the process of being a lifelong learner. And the way that we do that is by focusing in on the results. And the results that we're trying to hit is making sure that our students have 21st century skills. We want 93% or higher graduation rate, meet admission criteria, college with work-ready skills, and being informed and engaged citizen. And in doing that, we will have not only transitioned students into the real world ready, but we would have impacted our community with students that are ready to work right away, can go into colleges and come back and give back, as well as to go serve our community, come back and give back. So, as we talk about some of the things that are in place, I want you guys to know that, yes, we have graduates with strong habits of mind. But if you look at some of those attributes underneath that element, the one that stands out that we see that our students struggle with is self-confidence. Why? Because they're unsure. Why are they unsure? Because as educators and the Department of Education, we keep changing the target. So how can they be self-confident when we keep moving the needle? And we tell them, hey, you got to pass all these tests. And now we're telling them, okay, you have to pass the test. You got to at least sit for the test. And now, you got an alternative pathway to get to graduation. So they're a little bit confused and a little bit scared. All right? We wanted to bring students with us, but I'm going to tell you, when we asked some students to come here today, here's what they said. I don't want to jinx myself. We still have a month of school left. And I don't want to go there and then I end up being a non-graduate. True story. True story. All right? So what we've done is committed to, as soon as we issue them their letter that you're going to graduate, we want to get them with some media, all right? So that they can tell their story about their journey. Because who better to hear it from than them? Okay? So, we'll jump into this. As you guys know, the 7, 18, 21 is sort of like our theme here at Akron Public Schools. We got seven Ohio State tests that must be taken by all students. Algebra I, Biology, English IX, English X, Geometry, US Government, and US History. When taking those seven tests, the students have to acquire 18 points. Now, it breaks down a little bit more when you look at algebra and geometry, they have to at least have four points. Okay? When you look at English IX and English X, they have to at least have four points between the two. And then, US Government, US History, and Biology, they have to have at least six points. And you guys know when you do the math, that comes out to 14. So that means students have to excel in some other areas of the test. So, maybe I'm good in English and I get a four and a four, all right? Which means eight total points within those two areas. And now that student may feel a little more comfortable in hitting that 18. As the young lady who did the Pledge of Allegiance, she likes math. If she can score a four or five in algebra and geometry, which would give her a combined of eight or 10 points, she's on her way to getting to 18. So, some of the things that we've done to support our students along the way is Karen Gigiak and her department have made sure that our course sequence, our standards, and our assessments are aligned, not only to the test, but to the content. It's not about the test. We want to make sure that our students are maximizing their potential and gaining more knowledge within the content than normal. Utilizing technology to help with the integration of this course alignment and assessment, because the test is done online, if you didn't know. It's no longer paper and pencil. And we made an assumption two years ago that our students could sit down and this would be great for them to take a test online, because they're the generation that's always working with devices. Well, we were wrong. Okay? It was tough for them to navigate through the test online. So we had to go back, coach them up, teach them what a drag and drop was, what does it mean to highlight a sentence, what does it mean to highlight a paragraph, how to put things in order. So some of the technical skills of taking the test, we had to go back and make sure our students were able to do. And our principals aligned it to their 90-day plans, so the supports were real-time within the classroom. Also, when we saw students off-track of getting to 18 points, we created the real-time intervention. As you know, that takes place at the end of each semester, except for, we'll start one May 7th through June 1st, so that students are getting it before the semester ends. And we also have prep that takes place after school and during school. Credit recovery, online courses, real-time intervention, and night school supports our students with the 21 course credit hours that they have to get or credits they have to earn within math, English, science, social studies, and then their electives help PE. Okay? So, this is the requirements. So I want you guys to look at that picture. This is what every student had to do in order to graduate within the class of 2018. Take seven end-of-course exams, get 18 points, score 21, I mean, I'm sorry, earn 21 credits in those different areas. Okay? And then, something happened. The state found that districts across the state of Ohio were falling short of readiness. So, one thing changed. So that 18 kind of disappeared a little bit and senior projects were created. Okay? So now, instead of having to earn 18 points, I have an option of also doing a senior project. And we're going to have Marcy and Yvonne team up to talk to you guys about the great work that they did. Because, listen, you guys know it takes a village, right? It really, really took a village to get this going. Okay? When we found out about this, the school year was already in play. So it was October, November. And we had to scramble. And we put our minds together. Karen was very instrumental of getting us some supports from outside of the district to go into the buildings. And they're going to talk to you. It was really a great journey, so I want you guys to hear it from us.
So, yeah, we had to look at these students and say who in the district could benefit from having the senior project because they weren't making those 18 points. And now they're seniors and what are we going to do for them? And we have some numbers we're going to show you later. They're going to see how much of an impact this made. There you go. So as we started this journey this year, we looked at the list of nine things the state sent for us. And we diagnosed out of those nine things, four of them that we thought were broad enough nets to throw over our kids. The state says you only have to hit two. So, out of the nine, the kids had to have two on the list. And so, if these were the four that we thought, if we throw four at them, we'll at least get two. So, students could do 120 service learning hours or work hours. They did a senior inquiry, which was what we called our capstone. So you saw that capstone optional pathway? And/or they had to get a 2.5 GPA during their senior year and maintain a 93% attendance. Go ahead. So we talked about the 120 hours. We actually put a calculator out there for students that they could document their hours. We went all the way back to June, because that was when they became a senior. For a lot of our kiddos, they had jobs, so they were able to go back and get their pay stubs. They called employers. They started documenting all those hours. And someone at the school verified that students had worked that much or volunteered that much. We had a lot of great kids do volunteer experiences. I know over at Firestone, they had a volunteer experience where they raised over $1,000 for charity, which was pretty cool. For the senior inquiry, there was a think tank that came together. We assigned mentors at the site. We had project advisors that got hired to work with kids. We had things put up in the Google Classroom. We had bootcamps. And Central Office was a huge support, coming out and teaming up with kids, sort of adopting them. And as far as the GPA and attendance, we were able to track that with reports and advise the kids as they were going along. They're still in process on their GPA and attendance, and so kids are watching that very closely right now. Yvonne?
So, for the kids that we could not capture with the senior project, the other options were work keys, the work readiness seal, and an industry credential. And the way this is different from last year, work keys and industry credentials were always part of the traditional graduation pathways. But, the problem with the traditional pathways is they captured the same group of kids. And it all had to do with, could I take and pass my OSTs and get a high enough score on that? If I didn't get a high enough score on that, maybe I could pass the ACT at a college-ready level. So, there's a different test. Or if I couldn't pass either of those, I could pass the work keys, which was designed for displaced adults. So, needless to say, our students were struggling with those options because they were all capturing the same group of kids that could test very well. We had the work keys this year was changed. And I like to believe that it was a result of what they were seeing across the states that were using that as a graduation. So, beginning February 1st, they changed the work keys to a different formula. And what we are finding is that so, a much higher percentage of our students are passing the work keys on the first time, because I believe it's addressing the needs of students and not displaced workers. The work readiness seal came hot off the press, what, about two months ago? So, the work readiness seal is a list of 15 credentials that businesses across the state of Ohio have said, these are the skills that we need our workers and our employees to have. So they include communication skills, they include ethical skills, just a list of 15 criteria. And the students have to have three mentors and at least two settings that will verify they meet those skills. So, it could be from school, it could be from the community, or it could be from the work setting. So maybe I'm punctual to work all the time and my boss could sign off that I'm punctual, because that's one of the skills. So, if students show that they meet the criteria in these 15 areas, and they have at least three people that are validating they meet those criteria, then they bring in their form, and then that can become a pathway to show that they are work-ready. The industry credentials, we heard one tonight. The student who earned her STNA. So, our CTE pathways are testing their kids for credentials, and when those students meet those credentials, then that's also a pathway for graduation. The supports that we've put in place, the counselors are meeting with the students. This work keys is a brand-new test for them, so they're meeting with them and they're showing them a little bit about the work keys, helping them get on some practice sites, and then registering students for Plato. We actually have practice in Plato. For the work readiness seal, we've given all the information to the buildings, the principals and the counselors. They're meeting with their students. They're sharing the forms, helping the students connect with mentors and who those mentors could possibly be. And the industry credential, we already had a pretty good handle on that and we're making sure that our kids are going after those credentials.
So those four that you saw on the previous screen, this was five, six, seven, and then eight and nine were what, IB courses and college credit plus courses? So kids, we look for all of those things for kids to get two. So, this was our second sort of tier support. When we could try to find other ways for kids who weren't getting two, they could try the work keys test. We went back and gave them that opportunity.
So, where are we at now? The one thing that you guys will find is this work was very brutal, because if you listen to the narrative, in October, November, we got a memo. In February, we got a memo. In March, we got a memo. All right? Seriously. All right? Now you can do this. This is now an...
be. And the industry credential, we already had a pretty good handle on that, and we're making sure that our kids are going after those credentials.
So those four that you saw on the previous screen, this was five, six, seven, and then eight and nine were what, IB courses and college credit plus courses. So kids, we look for all of those things for kids to get to. So, this was our second sort of tier of support, when we could try to find other ways for kids who weren't getting two, they could try the work keys test, we went back and gave them that opportunity.
So, where are we at now? The one thing that you guys will find is, this work was very brutal, because if you listen to the narrative, in October, November, we got a memo. In February, we got a memo. In March, we got a memo, alright? Seriously, right? Now you can do this. This is now an option, alright? And we were not gonna sell our students short, okay? So folks always look at me, "Oh, you're not smiling." And I'm not smiling, because we gotta get these things in place for these kids, okay? It's hard to smile, because you don't know if you're gonna get it done, alright? But, the team really came together and got it done, and you'll see these results right here. We have, right now, an estimate of 1,444 seniors that are but in seats in our, in our district. And I have to say that, because if Howard was presenting, he'll tell you, there's some other factors that goes into the final graduation rate. We're talking about students that we are serving right now, not students that were here and left, which still has some count back to our graduation rate. We're talking about the students we're serving now. Out of those 1,444, 779 met the graduation requirements outright. What do I mean by that? They took the seven end-to-course exam, they got the 18 points, they have their 21 credits, they're ready to go. So they didn't have to worry about doing a project. Students that needed to do the project was about 537. Of those 537 students, they were met with open arms by Central Office staff, community members, retired counselors, retired teachers, retired support staff, you name it. We, we got anyone that wanted to help make a difference in a student's life to come and help us, because we couldn't do it by ourselves, okay? So, 54% of our students met it outright, and of that 537, we have about 25 students that are still in progress. We're still working with them, we're still encouraging them. This is where grit really comes in, because they see all of their friends leaving the room, because they're actually leaving the room. They're all in the same room, all of the supports are there, jumping around to students, helping them navigate through these different pathways. And as they see the room get smaller, it's sort of like the draft day that took place, alright? "I'm the only one in the room, everybody else been drafted. What does that mean for me?" Okay? So it's a self-check right now, alright? Which gives us about 39% of the students that were on the alternative pathway, alright?
That's 39% of our 1444.
39%, yep, of our 1444. Which gives us, and again, I gotta say this, or Howard probably will not be, this is a projection of students that we are serving now. This is not to say that this is gonna be 93% at the end, after Howard has to do some other things, but the students that we serve, that are gonna walk the stage, 93% of them are set to walk the stage, right now, okay? That is, that is 19% increase from last year. 74% was reported, okay? So, what is this message? When we allow for students to navigate their journey and connect it to real world, and not just the test, okay? They see the benefit and they make it happen. When we limit them to a test, we not only stress our students, we stress our teachers, we stress our parents, okay? But here, we had teachers, parents, retired teachers, retired counselors, saying, "We can do this," and it's happening. So, I thank our graduation committee, because now my hair may bro.
Since I'm not as quick in math as the young lady who gave us the pledge today, what's the actual number that's left, that I assume are not going to graduate? The people in the seats, not the ones that Howard is dealing with, the people in the seats, what is that number?
129.
129.
That's what we have left. And any, if any of those students completed any part of the senior project, if they did the inquiry, we gave them credit for that. We marked that for them, even though they might not be graduates. So, they might have been so credit deficient, that they're, they had another pathway already post-graduation. So we focused on their credit recoveries this year. If you really look at that 130 kids, you'll notice a lot of them have come back to us as juniors and seniors with very few credits, and we're trying to get them back on track. That's the vast majority of the students that are left, that did not do the project.
Just to expand on that, that's students that are credit deficient, because you know, that's that 21, alright? So, we're still working on, you know, working with them on that. But these are students that were ready and didn't get the OST points, and now we got them going. And then, of that 129, 25 are left, okay? To do the senior project, and then the others are credit deficient.
I just wanted to also remind everyone that our superintendent and assistant superintendent, but especially Mr. James, had a great deal to do with taking those alternative pathways to the state. And not only would that 39% be in a world of hurt, but that many kids plus across the state would be, you know, at risk of not graduating if it hadn't been for our superintendent, so.
And Ms. Manfield, that is a great point, because there are some districts where you see our 54%, they were like 18%. So 18% of their students hit the graduation requirements outright, 18%. Now, just think, we're, we're celebrating the 93%, but without the alternative pathway, that 54%, we will be 20% down from our normal graduation rate, okay? So, testing.
I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm gonna queue it up anyway, so we're talking 2018, what's next year hold for us?
We may find out. Like I said, I have to leave for Columbus, those are the conversations we have when we're down there. Like, like right now as we speak, it organizes meetings down in Columbus, and they're talking about those things, and, you know, things we have to put in place. Been to two meetings so far this year, and it seems like the work component and the industry credential are coming back. Now they're trying to determine if the senior inquiry, as we called it, or the capstones, come back and stay apart, as well as the community service hours and work hours.
And I'll add that the superintendent just was asked to serve again on the state superintendent's advisory for the graduation for next year. So we have wonderful place at the table to be able to help drive those decisions.
So you're taking the presentation to Columbus right now, is that?
We, we presented to Columbus, when was that?
First, three weeks.
Three weeks ago?
Okay.
And then, yes, now we're, they wanna have more conversations. Honestly, and I'm not just saying this, we, we are really leading the way with this, with this work, seriously. For once, we can say, we're leading the way, and Cincinnati's not.
Yes, and I guess, and that sort of leads to where the site is at. If you haven't had a chance to see, these were all the public resources that were out there for parents and students, and everything they needed to do was right on this page on the drawing board for them. So, under Programs on the home screen, and see.
Now, what does that have for our students that are credit deficient? Because we normally try to make a way in the fall to have graduation. So will there be students close enough that they will be able to finish some things in the summer, so we can have the fall graduation?
Absolutely. Actually, it starts May 7th. We'll do a session May 7th through June 1st, and then it'll pick back up again June 25th, and it'll go through July 27th, and hopefully they'll have fall graduation. So we're doing two sessions instead of three this year.
Thank you very much. Great job.
And next, we're gonna invite Deb Volk, Mr. Lookie, and others up for an update on I Promise.
Wow, that was great. You can do as well. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
Um, I wanna introduce our I Promise plan to you. We are going to give you an update on what we are doing. As you know, as we go through this, please just watch carefully, because it will go fairly quickly. Keith is our liaison with LeBron James Family Foundation, and Ms. Campbell is here with her staff. We have become a team at the hip, and I want you to know that we're having a ball. So let's get started, Keith.
Alright, very well. So if you remember the last time we were together, it was November, and we were getting board approval for our master plan, and talking about where our school was going to be located. And of course, that master plan focused on focus areas two and three, learning conditions, collaboration, obviously with our partners and community members, and actually financial stability, as we talk about today, partnering with the foundation and the other community partners, helping to build out and make our facilities something very special. So the, the master plan really was the nuts and bolts of the curriculum, and, and transportation, and operations, how we were gonna run the school. Today's presentation is about the facilities, and, and what we would like to propose to make this a beautiful space for learning. So under the direction of Mr. James, we did put together a core team, just as Ms. Volk said. So headed by Deb, but you also see, we have elementary education, child nutrition, facilities, transportation, the foundation, some of their partners, everybody's sitting at the table dreaming up the best ideas to really make this a special standout location for our families, kids, and teachers. So, we're dreaming big.
This is based on the same model that we do when we open up a new school. We have a core team that needs to plan moving the student body and staff out, if we're doing a new build, or moving a staff and student body back. So we currently are doing two core teams, one devoted to case, because they're going to be leaving 400, which is currently a signed space for the I Promise school, and then a separate one with the I Promise team and the internal team here to help improve. So that's why we wanted to have all these partners at the table, alright?
So of course, as we move forward, there are going to be costs and proposed changes that we will bring to the board and to the superintendent, as we move through some of these donations. Some of the things that we're looking forward to right now are some carpet squares that are coming branded and logoed from some of our partners, technology upgrades for our classrooms and the network. As you know, 400 West Market, although it's a beautiful building, it's not equipped like our CLCs with ceiling mounted projectors and smart boards, so we're gonna work through some of that. I'm very excited at the end to share with you some opportunities for a video lab that really connects us to our STEM learning opportunities. And of course, we celebrated this week getting our STEM designation, so we're very excited about that. Some volunteer work cleanup, we have lots of partners and people who wanna jump on board and help us out, and then school supplies. So people wanna outfit our kids and, and give them the very best. So all of these things, of course, we'll go through the board and, and work our proper channels. Same with building and, and property alterations. Deb, Deb is our savior, so she's helping us out on all the logistics and everything. So of course, you know, we're dreaming big, and we understand that some of these time, some of these things, things take time, they take approvals, but we're gonna, our plan is to work through those as, as fast as we can, and of course, being sensitive to Case Elementary as they, as they also move into their final destination. But if, you know, all things go well, we'll be ready July 30th with some, with some great renovations.
So before we go to the next slide, I just wanna update you a little bit on Case, so that you feel comfortable. The Case core team has met, they know exactly what they are doing, and this is a fairly easy move, because Case is only taking their students, their staff, and their curriculum materials, because they're walking into a new building with furniture and everything. So boxes and taping materials and labels will arrive on the 9th of May. We already have Saturdays planned that the staff can get in and start packing up their materials that they are not using. We are encouraging them to take their personal items home, that they won't be taking to Case. And if you know teachers, they have plenty of items they can take home, right at this point, because not everything they may want, want to use at Case, because they haven't moved into Case yet. We will then go ahead as those boxes are completed, because we currently own the, and can operate Case, those will start being removed out of the 400 West Market Street building by our Buildings and Ground staff prior to the closing of school. And then we will go ahead and finish out the last week of school, students are, their last day is the 6th. Teachers have a PD day, and they're gonna use some of that for their packing at Case. Last day for teachers is the 8th, but they get two additional days to go in on the 11th and the 12th. So the plan is, we will actually start completing the office move for Danielle and her staff on the 11th, and they should be over to New Case by the end of the first week in June, which gets us to what has currently happened over spring break. If you have not been to 400 West Market, the team, through a donation that you approved, has already been working on the second floor. We have a completely second-floor classroom area that has already been painted, and it is white. It is gorgeous, it is clean. The colors for the I Promise School currently are white with accents of gray and black, and you'll start to see this as we go through this. But we have been working quietly in the background, not disrupting Case, not disrupting Project Brad, so that we can get started to be planning the rest of what you are about to see.
Alright. We thought it was working. Alright, so some of the, some of the proposes, planned proposals that we have, first is a beautiful arch, so that visually, when you roll up to the school, you know you're somewhere special, the I Promise School. So the foundation and their partners have really hit the ground with starting to look at building permits, talking to McDonald's, all the logistics behind getting something like this done. And of course, once all that's in place, then it will all be formally submitted to the board and Superintendent James for final approval.
Okay, so I need to kind of update you on this one. If you look at this particular arch, which does go over the arching entrances and exits to the building, look to your left, in this area right here, they will need an easement for, because we do not own all of that. We are already in discussions to obtain that easement, and we have been assured, we have given the height of the buses. It is tall enough to get the buses in and out. So these are the discussions that we are having, so that we can go ahead and do this. So as they come through, they will be properly vetted and permitted, and through the wonderful donations coming in to the foundation, through our partners, that they are bringing with them, that will be at no cost to us.
Now, the buses can get through, McDonald's is there, what about their deliveries?
Same thing. All the trucks have been sized and whatever, and please remember, there is another entrance off of the side street that can come in the back. So that is it. Now, what you're gonna see now is some changes to what I will say is the front of the building. We are going to re-landscape this building a little bit through some wonderful partner alteration schemes that are coming. You are going to see some different changes. Now, but what you're basically seeing is, this is the current plants that are there, and some of these will be removed, and they will then be reset with items that are more appropriate to the environment. They are more appropriate to being long-lasting, lasting and less amount of custodial and maintenance work on them. So that is the one side of the building for the first one. Second, this, as you walk up, you know where the arch structure is. We had a lot of fun talking about the arch structure. It is staying, it is not removing, but we will be changing, if, if this all works well, to other plantings, and removing some of those bushes as well. This cleans up the front of the building, it allows better maintenance for the building. We're getting rid of these, all the buildings. We want a better view of the building from the street. This makes it much easier to handle, and this will all be reseated according to the correct item that will go there. This is the entrance sign. Now the sign is staying, don't get me wrong, it's not going anywhere. But we are gonna suggest that we re-landscape this to its more appropriate, as you can see, the tree's already taking over one end, and you want to make this visible. And this will say, "I Promise," and then, as you remember, the other part of this sign will be the Palladina Health Clinic, that is currently under construction on the west side of the building.
So this is very special to the foundation. So our families, they, they love and embrace the "we are family" philosophy, the foundation does. We at Zachary Public Schools want to wrap our arms around the families. And of course, we all have our promise. LeBron has his promise, the students, the teachers committed to doing our best. So these, this is a mock-up of what we would like to propose, three-foot-high cement letters that actually also function as bench seating, so that when you pull in, you are, you are visually impacted with the philosophies of the foundation and the school.
These are based on the letters, if you go up towards Cleveland, and you see the Cleveland lettering and stuff around the various museums and stuff. the various museums and stuff, they wanted to allow the outside use of the property for the public and the engagement of their families and their students. And that's just another way to look at them. And actually, if you drive by, these are sitting there, so we're still playing. Okay?
Go ahead.
We are moving the flagpole. Now, I'll explain why in a minute. This is where the flagpole is. You walk up to the building, the flagpole's in the center of the entrance concrete. We are suggesting that it be moved to this location. It will be better lighted. It will be set correctly. And this was one of the heavy discussions we had is as you take the flagpole out of the concrete entrance and you go to put it in another location, it is very specific on the depth, it is very specific on the torque or the wind, et cetera. So, this plan includes this, and this will be a better lighting of the flag, appropriate to the accommodations that are required for the lighting of the flag, and then we will be re-landscaping that area as well. We are doing this because of this. In the center, where it is, we are requesting that you understand, they would like to have the LeBron James Family Foundation logo, and this is actually a concrete logo. We've talked about what the depth is, the type of concrete, the type of covering, and they realize they're going to be using materials that will survive, salt, scrape, running it over, putting a bike on it, whatever. This is a material that we have found and worked with everybody to allow that coloring to be vibrant and to show the actual logo for the foundation as you enter the building. It helps set the tone.
And we know for our families that when they see that logo, it's something that they can trust. We also have a hometown hotline. We get more calls when I wear my "We Are Family" shirts or when they call the hometown hotline because they know that the foundation stands behind the work and that they trust the foundation.
The other part, I do want to tell you a little bit more about this entrance. There will be some upgrades to the entrance itself. We, in looking through the entrance walkway, realized there has been some part of, if you go towards the entrance door, that concrete has now sunk. So, this will include an uplift to that concrete so that it is not a trip hazard and a safety hazard. So, that is some of the other work that will be part of this landscaping as well.
So, this is a sculpture by Don Drum. So, he's approached the foundation, would like to donate a piece to the school. So, we're in discussion. This is 15 feet tall, so it's a very large piece. So, within the other recommendations that we're looking at the front of the school, we still need to talk and find, figure out where the best place for that would be.
He's always been a supporter of the district, and as you realize, we have several other pieces. In fact, we have one out in the hallway here. We've had one in Central Howard. We've had one at the Portage Pad. So, this was a nice offer by him, and we'll figure out the best place to put it.
Is it specifically for outside or...
It is an outside piece, yes. Now, we're into the classroom setting. They wanted to go through. We've been working very carefully on this, and what you see here is a rendition of what a classroom would look like. These are very clean classrooms. I want to explain that the furniture you see here is a donation coming through the foundation that actually is being constructed for the purpose... I think if I'm correct, Michelle, you told me it's called the "I Promise Table"?
We've just, with Principal Randy, have designed those desks, and it's a, they're called the "I Promise" desks.
The "I Promise" desks.
Based on what she felt was best for learning.
So, I just wanted to get, we actually have mocked up a classroom so that we can play with this and figure out, this is one view of that classroom. Again, as you can see, this includes the other desks that are, allow for collaborative work, allow for the STEM and STEAM curriculum that is going to go in, and also includes a rebranding of the lockers as well.
So, those used to be green, so through one of our partners, it's a wrap that transforms the lockers.
And the wraps, this was another very interesting discussion. These wraps are, you guys probably know this better than I do, it's called bat head material. We had to take all of these materials to the fire department to see, did they meet the public code for fire retarding? What would happen? So, we have been very actively engaged in the codes to meet this kind of placement. And then, this is another view of the mock-up classroom. This is the main staircase. Now, I want you to look at this very carefully. What you will see here is not only the branding of the entrance, so as you walk in, you get to see the logos and the feeling that as you walk in... This is called the shoe wall, and if you look very carefully, there are shoes there. They will be LeBron's type shoes, and they will be used as a fundraiser. Again, we had to go talk to the fire department because LeBron's shoes are, just like my shoes, they could be a fire hazard.
A little bit bigger.
Well, okay. But, the issue is, we still wanted them to be correctly... Yeah, I know. I wear a five. I don't know what LeBron or two is, but it's not good. But, the idea is, we want to make sure that what we put on the wall meets the fire code because you may not realize, you can't cover more than 20% of the wall. So, this is the current design that has been accepted with the fire department in mind. The other change is the main staircase. If you look at the main staircase now, it is a wooden staircase with spindles. We are hoping to make a change to that. We're still looking at materials so that it becomes a little bit more inclusive and easy, and I did ask this question last week, and yes, this will go down to the downstairs as well. So, that is still working on that. The timing of this is what's important. We are working commercially with donations as well as the vendors that are supplying these items. We are hoping to make this available completely when staff starts to arrive by the 20th of July. So, please be aware, as we work on this building, we sat very strategically last week with the core team, and as you drive by, more than likely, you will see the lights on 24/7 because we truly need that amount of time. We have a very short summer, and we want the students and the family and the community to walk into a school that is ready for them when students arrive on July 30th. Reverend Walker?
Yes. On the outside or on the inside, is there anything that has either our logo or our name?
Yes.
SSAPS?
Yes. First of all, the logo's on.
If it's on the arch or if it's on the rear, the...
The logo's...
Nice emblem that's there, or when you come right in, there's somewhere to make sure that that's highlighted.
Yes. It is also part of the original sign out in the front, and it will be included in some of the other items that you see inside. We are not forgotten. We are the school district.
And the reason why I said that because Mr. James himself made it clear...
Yes.
This is not a charter school.
No.
This is not a private school. This is a part of Akron Public Schools.
That is correct.
So, we want to make sure we honor that as well.
And that is an item that is a part of our discussion. That's why the main sign stayed the same, and some of the items are still being tweaked. Okay? Any other concerns or questions?
This is that last piece. So, currently, we are talking with WKYC. They are interested in building out a television studio in Akron since we do not have one. So, Amani and Carl have their mobile truck. But, as we look at the space at 400 West Market, there's a nice area, Room 15, across from the gym, that we could potentially build this space out. So, it would be fully functional so that you could do a broadcast live from 400 West Market, but honestly, it's really built out for the use of the students, and it's designed to be student-friendly. So, as they're doing their presentations of learning, they'd be able to film, edit, and produce those as well as do morning announcements. And then, honestly, we hope to build that right into the College and Career Academy so as our students are immersed in media and technology that, you know, perhaps they move right on to Ellet High School and into the broadcasting area. So, obviously, this is big and something that, we're putting all of that information together. We have another phone call with them tomorrow so that we can bring these proposals and specs to Mr. James and the board.
Any other questions?
As far as the gymnasium...
You're taking all the words right out of me.
Have we given thought as to how we're going to...
There is a plan that has been proposed for an outside basketball court because, obviously, that is the heart of LeBron is basketball. We've been in discussions on how we would do that, and we, at this point, are looking at how we could accomplish that. The gym itself, at this point, we have only 240 students arriving for the first year, so they will continue to use the space that has been used in the past. But, those discussions will go forward because, obviously, we have 240 coming in the next year. So, we will be looking at that, but we have a very short time window, so to deal with the gym is not necessarily something to open up for this school year. We do have to make the school available for the start of the school day. Okay? Now, everything is all set for the buses as well. The buses are already scheduled. We just got the listing from Keith last week, so Mr. Andaksler is working on that so that we can set up the bus routes for the students and inform the families. And we also are working on the map for parents so that they'll know the traffic pattern for 400, just as the same that we have done for the other schools that have been there because it is a very specific traffic pattern that needs to be followed.
And not to monopolize, just to...
Too late.
Say it too late.
I didn't hear anything.
Just to go back to the other slide, when we talked about our students and the graduation rate, they had wraparound services. And just so everyone understands and knows that there's going to be many, many wraparound services, and I think we need to continue to repeat that to make sure the listening public, everybody realizes that there's a lot of things, campus staff, volunteers, other partners, even the school day is going to be totally different than our normal school day can be at the other schools, which you highlighted with the bus happy. So, maybe we might be, just go over that for a second again.
So, we're going to be able to pilot at 400 West Market, a physical space for our Resource Center where we'll be able to bring in some of those partners, potentially Akron Food Bank, Child and Family Services, as well as pastoral counseling and some of the other programs that's currently...
Can I just piggyback on that just a little and just reiterate what you said because I think that is the most important part, and that is that this is the pilot of it. That means that if you're not in I Promise, it doesn't mean that those doors are going to be shut to you and we don't care about those services for you. That means we're going to be piloting. That's where it's going to start, just like STEM learning started and project-based learning started at the STEM middle and then has gone all across the district. Right. And IB is spreading, but we're going to do it way faster than we've spread IB.
One other thing that we did not put in this slide, but I will let you know about, you will probably see a minor redesign of the kitchen. We are currently working on that to support a slightly different feeding system for these students because they're going to have a little bit different type of lunch period. You will see those probably come because we need to add a freezer. We need to do some other things to that kitchen there. So, in order to meet the needs as we hope to propose it, and you'll probably see those coming shortly, those items are out for a bit right at the moment. So, you will probably see that sometime in May with the scope of getting that work done prior to the opening of the school as well.
Just out of curiosity, have the students and families that are going to be in that building next year been identified yet?
Yes. And so, we've just finished our orientation for our newest set of families, and then we've been communicating through letters right now, keeping that last year's group of students up to date on where we are and...
We got to have dinner with them.
Yeah.
Always the best, I bet you.
Any questions or other concerns about the proposals we brought forward to you? We really would like to start on this one.
Michelle's available as well if you have a question.
She might have anything to add.
Strongly, I want to say, they talk a lot about, we've brought a lot of partners to the table, and we have. LeBron has some really great partners, but there's two things that I think is important to say, and that is that we want to create a moment, and creating moments for our families, like the first day of school is a special moment. The second day of school is a special moment. Every presentation they do is a special moment. So, when we're bringing these visions that he has, it's about creating moments and making every step of their journey really important. Partners have helped us with that, and partners have come to the table, but I also think it's very important for everyone to understand, whatever is not being funded by a partner, LeBron and the LeBron James Family Foundation is funding. He is 100% supportive of what he's doing from reducing the classroom size for our students to transforming some of the outside, to create a moment, to create something very special for his families. And I, our partners are awesome, but he's at the root of that, and I feel strongly just to share that so people understand how much that he is behind this as being a public, Akron Public School student and growing up in this system, growing up in this community. He hasn't forgotten that, and he's driving us. He's driving us to bring this to you, to say, "Please let us make some of these transformations happen." And much like Lisa said, I think if you start somewhere, I think then it can, you know, the ripple effect. I think that's what I've seen with him and his influences to help, let's start, whether, you know, it happens to be the I Promise School, and help get these services beyond what's at the I Promise School to other schools and let that, you know, let his influence help that in his way. So, I do appreciate all of our partners, and they are awesome, but you need to understand that when we brought this to you guys, we didn't want to be a financial burden, and we're trying to relieve that from you and come to the table with that in mind, and he is a huge part of that.
Thank you, Michelle.
Well, it's unprecedented, right? I mean, let's just be honest. It's unprecedented. We're doing the best practices, and we're putting them all in one place, and we're saying, "This is what we're going to do," and LeBron is saying, "Do it, and we'll find a way," right? And then, whatever we learn from that turns the whole district into a world-class district. So, absolutely, it's unprecedented.
He's a winner. He's going to make sure it wins, and Akron wins for sure. I would be willing to bet, and I'm not a betting man because I don't like losing my money, but I would be willing to put my money on the line. He will make it happen, not just for this school, but for Akron School District, period.
And this is, again, it's a win-win, and the board, I'm speaking a lot because I'm very supportive of what we've done, and I'm grateful that I've been on the ground floor of a lot of things, but to see it just growing as it is and to have the partners, the vision, all of that rolls into, as you said, the puzzle of our college and career, beginning on that bottom level, putting partners that are in that building as well, our students then move up the ladder in all of those areas. So, eventually, if it's East, Ellet, or whatever, those networking and career possibilities will be made possible. But, again, with the pilot and with all of these things that we're doing, we're creating an atmosphere and an opportunity for all of our students to individually have those key moments and for us as a district to have those key moments. And so, I applaud what the foundation is doing, what our staff is doing to keep the focus where it is in our academics and all the other wraparound services, the physical plant issues and requirements. So, we applaud all that is being done, and especially this board for, you know, their outstanding support.
I just want to say, if I may, Reverend.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a prime example and a very good example of working together for the common good, which is something that I think that Summit County is really good at. And all the initiatives and the things, the wonderful things we're doing at Akron Public Schools is all about that. We have such a great partners. We have just, you know, collaborations and people who really care, working to try to help, you know, each and every child in our district, which is phenomenal. So, I just commend you guys and, you know, and everybody that sits around this table and on the, what is that called? What's that word?
Core group.
Yes. As well, you know, because you guys do a great work, and I don't think you get, you know... know, people tell you how wonderful you are, you know, and how much you have done to make this a successful district. So I just thank you guys, everybody that contributes on a daily basis to Akron Public Schools, because it's someplace to really be proud to work and to volunteer and just to be.
Thank you for your time.
And also, Michelle, I'd just like to say to, you know, a few, many of us around the room, a few years ago, got to celebrate LeBron's homecoming or return home. But I think to the same people sitting around this room, we all know that he never truly left. So his, and with every update that we get on the I Promise School, I think we're always reminded what an impact he has on this community, on our kids, and certainly Akron Public Schools as a whole. So please, I know he has nothing really going on right now. If you happen to see him or talk to him, tell him we said thank you, and we're really looking forward to opening this school up within and moving forward on our partnership. Thank you. All right, anything else? Have a journey.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. You know we have entertainment. With that, then, approval of the meeting minutes. We need a motion for approval for the regular meeting minutes, April 16, 2018. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. President. I have before me for your consideration, two motions and seven resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Since we're waiting on a motion, congratulations and welcome aboard. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda items. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Baylor? Yes. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration, 11 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the business affairs recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Stay.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration, 11 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Since we're waiting on a motion, congratulations and welcome aboard. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda items. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Baylor? Yes. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander, on the first one, the personnel recommendations, did you want that abstention on all or any, or just particular items? It must have mattered for you for the record.
Just for the record, I'll just say that. And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration, 11 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the business affairs recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration, 11 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the business affairs recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Baylor? Yes. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Well, half of it was already given by Assistant Superintendent Dr. McWilliams Woods on the State Superintendent's Graduation Advisory Committee. I'll also be with Akron Metropolitan Housing Executive Director Tony O'Leary this week in Washington, DC at the Council of Large Public Housing Agencies, which really, you know, kind of related to some of the work that we're doing with LeBron's Foundation, has really been working over the last several years on how public housing agencies and educational institutions at the K-12 level can work together. So we're giving a presentation on early childhood initiatives in the districts and our collaboration at the Reach Opportunity Center.
I'm going to keep mine very short, just to let you know that Ginger and I had a quick, a brief discussion, and we're going to get together to talk about our mobile meetings, some suggestions on how we might change those up a little bit, but still get out into the community with mobile meetings this year. And actually, I haven't had a chance to update Ginger, but it leads into the second thing. Reverend Walker and I met with Council President Somerville and Councilman Fusco and Councilman Milkovich recently to talk about getting our joint meetings on the calendar for this year. So we're potentially looking at, probably more likely sometime in June for a joint meeting between Akron City Council and the Akron School Board. And then we'll look at, we're going to toss around dates for that, and then we'll set agenda items. But I also brought up the discussion we had about the mobile meetings and how we might be able to better incorporate those into some of the stuff that they already do that might be better incorporated to us. So anyway, more information coming on that soon, as well as some dates, most likely in June, towards the end of May or June, Saturday to set aside. So tonight, before we go, I'll be asking you for some possible Saturdays that we can look at for our board retreat, since we try and do those now a little closer so that they're set up for the beginning of the fiscal and the academic year, July 1. So, sorry, I just realized I was quiet talking, too, so I hope everyone heard me. If you didn't, you can watch the recording. All right. Anything else from you, Treasurers' report?
Quick note, this evening, sure, place settings, there is an investment review, the Blue Light Report. If I could just highlight some work on behalf of the Superintendent for the Finance Committee. We get these updates quarterly. As you know, there's been about six rate hikes since 2015, and that makes a big difference for our investment portfolios. You know, we're very generic in what we can invest in, and what I mean by generic is we're very sensitive to risk, right? So this is the public taxpayer's mind, so there's only a few instruments that we can invest in. But we do need to be savvy with those dollars, why we hold them in our custody. And so yields have been approaching almost a 2% rate, which, if you remember, post-2008, they were 0.1%. And sometimes, if you, your home checking accounts, I think you all know that, is probably still 0.1%. Through that investment policy, we've added about $900,000 in our expected yield over the next 12 months versus what you can see in the bold underline from our previous policy. I really appreciate the board's perspective on this and working diligently on changing policy, allowing us to do this. And what we're doing is we're adding significant dollars to the general fund, over $350,000. We're adding almost $400,000 to the construction funds, which only enhances our projects and to our permanent improvement, which is the maintenance of these facilities. After the fact, we're adding another $150,000. So I appreciate your work on this. Concludes my report.
Thank you. Committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy.
We have for the second of three readings, prior to approval, revised policy 4121 Criminal History Record Check, new policy 3138, suspension during pending criminal action, new policy 4138, suspension during pending criminal action, revised policy 5111.01, only student, new policy 5111.03, children and youth in foster care, revised policy 5630.01, positive behavior intervention and supports and limited use of restraint and seclusion, new policy 8141, mandatory reporting of misconduct by licensed employee, new policy 8142, criminal history record check for contracts with student services, and revised policy 8600.04, bus/van driver certification. Second reading of three.
Thank you. Any questions for the Legal Contract Support Policy Committee? Hearing none, Finance, Capital Management?
Yeah, a brief report. The Finance Committee met on April 26th, myself, Reverend Walker, our Superintendent, and our CFO were there. The highlights of the meeting, number one, was a review of our annual audit, and Reverend Walker's going to speak a bit about that.
The audit, the state auditor's office has finalized the annual financial audit of the Akron Public Schools. The state auditors review the district's financial statements and major fund information. The results of the audit have been shared with the Finance Committee and will be further reviewed by the board at this meeting this evening. The following items are included for study: independent auditors' report for Akron Public Schools, independent auditors' report with compliance with requirements applicable to each major federal program and on internal control over compliance required by Uniform Guidance at the Public Schools, schedule of findings for Akron Public Schools, independent auditors' report for our radio station, WAPS FM. The document is provided an overview of the audit, showing no material weaknesses, deficiencies, or material noncompliance of the financial process of the district practices. For the audit period of July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, Akron Public Schools has once again received a clean bill of financial health from the Auditor of State, resulting in an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion is the highest possible audit rating and means the audit was free of major accounting or procedural errors. This assessment demonstrates to taxpayers the district's commitment to proper stewardship of the monies entrusted to the district. And of course, we want to thank the CFO, Finance Department, for their outstanding work. I believe the audit took a long period of time. It's not just someone coming in for a couple of days. They were here for several months to transact the audit, and of course, we're grateful for the clean bill of health.
Special thanks to the staff for sharing.
The other part of the meeting, among other things, we went over the investment report that Ryan gave in his Treasurers' report. So kudos once again to the CFO's department for that. And then lastly, several members of the Finance Department have recently attended professional development. The Finance Department's excited to share many of those new ideas and practices learned at the various conferences, improving the district, improving us district-wide. So we look forward to hearing that and sharing that at future Finance Committee meetings. That's all we have.
Instructional policy and student achievement?
To kick us off today. At your place is your monthly update on college and curriculums. Please take a look at that. You'll see that highlighted at the top is the Jennings Meeting that happened on April 18th, and hopefully you've had a chance to read the article, the excellent article by Tess that was in, on the front page of yesterday's paper, that highlighted the parents' meeting that was, meetings that are being held all across the district by Ms. Taka and her staff. So please take a look at those updates. At our most recent instructional policy meeting on Friday, we also talked about a timeline for the announcements over the next three months of additional major business partners and grants from foundations. Major businesses are stepping up to join our Akron Children's Hospital and Kent State University to support our students. It's a very exciting time for our students, so stay tuned for the agreements coming to board for approval. If you want to come to a meeting where it's all really happening, come to instructional policy, because we have got it going on over there.
In addition to that, I want to talk a bit about the social studies adoption. At our instructional policy committee meeting on Friday, April 27th, the persons that were in this room received a presentation by Adam Mader, who is our district learning specialist for social studies, as I listened on. I was in Columbus for a Leadership Institute. He showed us, he showed them the proposed new social studies adoption that will be out in the hallway for your review for the next two weeks. Since we are now a one-to-one laptop district, this is the first adoption that can be nearly 100% digital. This is our first, I'm sorry. Please take time to review the contents before the next board meeting of the information that's out there in the hallways, as you will be tested on that information. And we've also asked Mr. Mader to present to the full board what we had experienced on the next meeting so that you can understand the significance of the shifting that we're doing in the curriculum. Please reach out to Mr. Mader or to Dr. McWilliams Woods if you have any further questions. We'd be happy to entertain that. Moving on to LeBron James Family Foundation Partnership. At your place, you have some information, some monthly updates regarding the I Promise School and our continued partnership with the LeBron James Foundation for their current wheels for education and Akron I Promise Network students. As you can see by reviewing the updates, the foundation has done an incredible job bringing in additional partners, as Michelle had said about certain partners, to support our students. We would like to thank Goodyear Jobs and Family Services, Crystal Clinic, United Way, and Kent State for stepping up and helping our APS students.
And Mr. Mader's here today, and I just want to tell you, he's usually a happy person, but he is downright giddy over the social studies implementation. So that's why, one of the reasons we asked that we give a presentation, he give a presentation at the next board meeting. Wait till you see this. Yeah, well, that's true. But Ginger got to listen along, but we're really excited about this change, so he's going to present. Thank you, Mr. Mader, for being here.
Any questions for instructional policy and achievement?
We'll do better.
We'll need to add it appropriately under this section, but do you want to update on the at-home committee?
Yes, I did.
Under unfinished business, I was going to.
Thank you. Just briefly, we had our first community meeting where we're taking a look at the successful Akron Public School graduate through the lens of behavior, discipline, and safety. It was an introductory, we sort of called it the sales meeting for the community to get them, you know, excited to come back and actually engage in the discussion. I think we have 50 or 60 people there. Had a hiccup on some invites, but I think that hiccup's been taken care of.
community leaders as well, after the planning meetings, sort of debriefing that took place last Friday. Thank you.
I have just a brief on the other committee, the, um, what do they call them?
Student engagement.
Student engagement? Yes. Um, the superintendent and Mrs. Baylor and I have met with, um, some folks from Kwanis who are interested in, um, in partnering with us. So there's some things that are being done at a research level right now. I don't know, I think a few of us got to attend in San Antonio. Um, there were several sessions that had to do with student engagement at the board level and at the district level. So, um, some research has been done. It's been a kind of a busy, um, time right now, but hopefully get that kicked in here and, uh, starting in June, and be able to have another meeting on that.
They sent some nice stuff along from San Antonio. It was really interesting.
Yeah, there was, there were, there are a lot of districts doing some really incredible things, and some that you just go, ooh, no, that's not, that, I don't like that.
You should know what you don't wanna.
Right. It's, sometimes it's, it's even better to know what you don't want, and then you can explore what you do. So, um, a lot of really good pieces that I think that we'll be able to, to discuss and see what'll work here in Akron.
Very exciting. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Hearing none, we have two items of new business. First, the Educational Service Center of Northeast still hiring.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, in December of 2013, the Governor's Executive Workforce Board published, uh, the report entitled Building Ohio's Future Workforce Report, which we actually use as part of our research for our college and career academies. Um, in that report, they outline, um, nearly 20 recommendations, and part of those included business advisory councils. Like, it's almost like they forgot that business advisory councils have been on the books since 1995. But they altered some of the requirements for business advisory councils. But one of the previous requirements, uh, actually allowed school districts to partner with their educational service center to actually run their business advisory council. And for years, we hadn't done that, and the idea was to just fold ours into our college and career academy, um, executive steering committee. However, um, House Bill 49 outlined some additional things that we have to do in terms of reporting to the state. So by, uh, June of this year, we have to have a new or renewed business advisory council. Um, we also have to develop a plan that's outlined in Ohio Revised Code by September 30th of this year. Um, then we also have to submit those plans to the Department of Education through what's called the SAFE account. And then by March, we also have to publish a statement of accomplishment. So at an earlier ESC meeting with other superintendents, um, they propose doing exactly what they're allowed to do, is handle all of the reporting issues for us with, um, the Department of Education in terms of meeting those requirements. So in their, uh, joint agreement, which I'm requesting authorization to sign, it's actually to conduct quarterly meetings and to annually develop the written plan, um, providing, uh, recommendations to the ESC governing board on matters regarding the, um, uh, Business Advisory Council. It'll include, um, some of the things that we're already doing, uh, such as delineating employment skills, uh, development of a curriculum, which we're doing with our executive committee with college and career academies, uh, monitoring changes in the job market and the economy, um, in terms of what future jobs would be available. We're already doing that with Connectus NEO, one of our, uh, good partners, um, and suggestions for developing a working relationship among business, labor organization, and educational personnel, providing quarterly reports to all the participating school districts, and as I said before, filing the annual claims with the Department of Education, and, uh, the, meeting the requirement to issue joint statements by March 1st, which would outline the progress that each of the district, uh, each of the districts have made that year, and summarizing the actions that each district has taken, um, regarding fulfilling their responsibilities under, um, under the changes in the law that, uh, impact the operation of business advisory councils. For me, it's more of an efficiency piece, um, to have someone, uh, and there's no cost for this, to have them just do some of the regulatory parts of our, um, revised rules for operating business advisory councils.
Any questions for the superintendent? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into that agreement, uh, with the Educational Service Center of Northeast still hiring. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
And the case community, uh, from today's joint quarter review, the case community learning center settlements?
Yeah, so, um, there are, um, as you're aware, at CASE, there were two issues with our, um, well, issue with the schedule and delays from the general contractor. So two vendors, uh, took issue with that and have filed claims, uh, against that general contractor. Thank you. Um, so the first one was with, um, Gunther Mechanical and then Penn Ohio Electrical Contractors, they both filed claims against, um, Vendrick Construction. And so, um, of course, the OFCC attorneys, our hired attorney, and the attorneys for these two vendors have met, and, uh, the OFCC has agreed that the amounts, uh, which total 316,116 dollars are due to these two contractors. Um, Gunther Mechanical of 149,916 dollars, and Penn Ohio Electrical Contractors settlement of 166,200 dollars. Um, joint board approved those, uh, uh, settlement, uh, agreements, uh, earlier today. I'm asking approval for those. We will then be going back to Vendrick Construction to recoup these losses, uh, for these delays and backcharge that contractor. And we're working with the commission's attorneys and ours to do that.
So move. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I just wanna make one comment that came up at joint board. Knock on wood, we believe this is the last time this board will have to deal with this kind of situation, because this is the last building that we were the prime, I guess, and now the rest of our construction project will be under the contractor at risk. So, um, fingers crossed that, you know, this comes up, so.
And nothing that we know is a delay to them. This isn't uncommon, so, right, so we're still good for, as we heard earlier, so we're good. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? I'd like to point them out. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
With that, your favorite part of the EGM, uh, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1 to discuss the employment of a public employer official at the school district, and the Revised Code Section 121.22G1 to result with legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and/or the school district that are subject to pending or imminent court action. I'm looking for a motion to recess into executive session. There's a motion and a second. Anything else before we recess? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.